Yes, go ahead and start the webinar.
Recording in progress.
Welcome, everyone, to the Tuesday, November 18th, 2025 Tom Water City Council meeting. We will start off with rule call.
Councilmember Leeta Dahlhoff.
She's excused.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson. Councilmember Joan Cathy.
Present.
Councilmember Eileen Swarthout.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Othouser.
Present.
Councilmember Kelly Van Holtz.
Present.
Mayor Debbie Sullivan.
I'm present. Join me for our salute tour flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a couple of special items. The very first special item is the introduction of Sergeant Brent Baker. So I will turn it over to our police chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Brent? So Sergeant Baker is the first sergeant promotion we've had in several years. We're really excited. And one of the things that Deputy Chief Keelis and I point of is trying to get them in front of you so you can understand who they are and know a little bit about their background, started building up some of the relationships that get lost over COVID and just as the organization's grown. So I'll introduce Brent and then I'll let him introduce his family to you. So Sergeant Brent Baker, he came to us from Redmond PD with seven years of experience. And before that, he has some of the most interesting work experience of anyone I've ever come across. So and it gives him a good background for doing right now. He was hired by Tom Water PD in 2016. In that time, he's worked patrol. He's been a major crimes detective. He's been a field training officer. He's a less lethal instructor. He's a patrol tactics instructor. And he's also been an acting sergeant before he was promoted to full sergeant. In his time with us, he has 15 individual commendations, including a commendation for preventing an individual from jumping, literally jumping off a bridge and saving her life. So Brent is highly decorated. The other thing about Sergeant Baker is he's also probably one of the smartest people in our organization. And I know that if there's a problem or an issue that myself or Deputy Keelis can go to him, give him the problem, and he'll take care of it. So I want to introduce Sergeant Brent Baker. Will you introduce your family?
Yeah. So this is my dad, Brian Baker. He practiced law in Lewis County and Thurston County, 20 years in Lewis County, 20 years up here in Thurston County. He's prosecuting attorney for Lewis County for, I think it was three years, all right, or six? Four. Yeah. And then this is my mom, and she's obviously been my mom 51 years, and she's been amazing. And a lot of the gifts that I have have been from her. I really appreciate her. And then this is my sister Brooke, and she's got four Duval right now. And she just started a job at Green Hill, working with our youth that we commonly have contact with.
So I want to say congratulations.
Thank you.
And that's very much an honor. And I want to present you, yes.
That's excellent.
And I think maybe you could give one to each one of your family members.
I will. Thank you.
Yes, because coming from a law enforcement family, it's a lot. That support takes a lot. So I really appreciate the job you do, and thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is a proclamation for GIS Day, and Councilmember Swarthout will be reading the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the city of Tom Water recognizes that an understanding, use, and application of geospatial technology is crucial to operating our infrastructure, sustaining our natural resources, and stimulating economic growth, thus benefiting the welfare of the general public throughout the South Puget Sound region. And whereas geographic information systems, GIS, technology also allows us to see complex relationships and patterns to more intelligently respond. And whereas there is a need to promote GIS awareness, education, and technical training this rapidly developing technology to its full potential. And whereas the city of Tom Water acknowledges that those that have chosen GIS as their profession or as part of their discipline to improve their lives of our residents. And whereas to recognize and support the efforts of partners who work on activities to improve environmental sustainability, human services, and various humanitarian efforts to better our world. And whereas having a day of GIS activities open to staff, government leaders, and the community will help promote spatial thinking and a better understanding of the use of these decision-making tools. And whereas the city of Tom Water is committed to utilizing GIS to inform decision-making and better serve its residents, and make useful geographic information open and easily available to the community as a platform for innovation, I can't say, innovation. And therefore, Debbie Sullivan, Mayor of the city of Tom Water, does hereby proclaim number 19th, 2025, GIS Day, and calls upon the people of the city of Tom Water to learn about the GIS applications and data available on our website, and encourage geospatial education in our community.
Great, thank you. And we have one of our newest employees, Nemo Paulson, who will be coming and accepting the proclamation. And if you have a couple of words, that would be great. And if you have anything.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Nemo Paulson. I am a GIS intern here at the city of Tom Water. I've been here for about 10 months now. I love it here. I'm also a student at Evergreen State College. I am a senior. I'm about to graduate with my bachelor's and my GIS certificate. I am hoping to continue on with Evergreen and my master's in environmental science, and I hope to stay here with the city. I really love the people here. I really love working here. We are also having a public event tomorrow from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. So if any of you could show up, that would be absolutely wonderful. We're going to do some map making. So if that interests you at all, that's wonderful. Thank you.
Where's the event going to be?
It's going to be right here, right in the room you're in right now.
And will there be refreshments?
There will be cake.
Cake.
Well, thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right, our next special item is body worn camera implementation briefing, and I believe our police chief will be presenting.
I'll be, Mayor, I'll be introducing.
Oh, you'll be introducing, okay.
So we've been working towards implementation, selection and implementation of the body worn cameras for the Tom Water Police Department for a while now. Deputy Keelis has been leading this effort on our behalf, and he was going to give a briefing to council so you understand where we've been, where we are, and where we're going. Deputy Chief Keelis?
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. In a short period of time, I'm going to go over the long road that has taken us to get here. But I think everyone will be happy with the work that's been done and where we're at now. So, Tom Water PD Body worn Camera Project. The team that's leading this is myself, Administrative Sergeant John Kendersee, our Strategic Advisor, Dr. Oliver Bowers, and then our new record supervisor, Ashley Clark. So these were the individuals that helped me tremendously get this project to where it is today. Where we're at right now in the implementations is we have tentative budget approval. We've completed the staffing that we've needed to have in place to make sure that we can handle all the video that will be coming in. We've conducted a needs assessment to figure out what we need, what our community expects and wants, and making sure that we meet the needs of the organization. Completed a due diligence check with our partners to make sure that the technology we select is in line with what we need, as well as technology that they're using as well. We're currently in the contract phase, which is in process. And that's in process and has been sent through. So we're kind of in that process right now. And after that, we'll be going to procurement and then installation. Kind of how the timeline shook out. And so in August 2025, we promoted Sergeant John Kendersee as the administrative sergeant. We needed position because of the amount of work it takes to install, implement, maintain the body worn camera and in-car video program. And we just didn't have capacity to take that on without a new person. It's a pretty massive undertaking. Then in September, we hired Ashley Clark as the record supervisor. We'll be doubling the amount of video that we're taking in right now. And so without extra support staff to handle the video, the prosecutor's office, and PDR requests, it would have just been, we wouldn't have been able to handle that. So we had to wait till we had the proper personnel in place. We could handle and process all the video and get it out in a timely manner. On September 4th, the project officially kicked off, and that was our first meeting, myself and the folks on that team, and where we set the expectation and the priorities of where this project was currently, where it needed to be, and what the expectation was for moving it forward. We determined that before we could move forward, we needed to conduct a needs assessment. We need to figure out what do we want the system to do? What do we want the capabilities to be? We needed to make sure that what we were asking the system, the system to do that was in line with our community's expectations, that it also met the needs of the department. That was completed. And one of the things we identified is partners, Lacey, Olympia, and the Thurston County Sheriff's Office all use Axon video. And one of the things we determined to be very important is having equipment amongst the four agencies so that everyone was familiar how every other agency worked, what their equipment capabilities were, how they operated. And because we've had some issues in the past when agencies are using different video systems and they're not compatible, and you can't, you know, process information back and forth. So that was our number one goal. So once Axon was determined to be the vendor, based off of the commonality with our agency partners, knew that the prosecutor's office was already familiar with Axon and evidence.com because they're already using it with Olympia, Lacey, and the sheriff's office, Axon had the best technology and what we knew the community would expect, and what the organization needed. And also, Axon is on the state contract, and were approved as a vendor solution that we could just select and move forward with. But they were selected primarily for their, the technology that they bring, the ease of use of that technology, and how robust the system is. And we'll go over some of that stuff here in a minute. After that, we did the due diligence check. I asked our record supervisor and our administrative sergeant to reach out to the agencies using Axon to make sure that there wasn't anything we were missing. Were there any things that they wish they could have or would have done differently so that we weren't making the same mistakes? Once that was done, all the agencies loved Axon. It works well for them. It was going to work well for us. So once that was completed, we verified that we weren't missing anything. We moved forward with the final demonstration to the command staff. Axon walked us through the system capabilities. I was very impressed, as was Chief Mason and the members of the team on what Axon brings to the table. And we'll talk in a little bit. Right now, and we're in October, we've procured two body worn cameras for field use. We have those here, and we're ready to begin deployment of those in November. Basically, so officers that go out in the field, make sure that our infrastructure, technology-wise, is working correctly, have any issues with video upload, or video retrieval, or if there's anything that we need to look at differently to make sure that when that technology comes, that we don't have any hiccups and we're ready to go. We began cost and contract discussions with them in October. November, we're going to start the testing. This month, we have a tentative policy that's been created that's in alignment with both the department and the police guild. Also began impact bargaining with the police guild, which we believe probably going to be wrapped up by the, hopefully by the end of this month. December, we're looking, we're hoping to determine final costs on the project. We're hoping to finalize an agreement with a member of the police union for the use of body worn cameras. And we're hoping that we can get a purchase agreement finalized by the end of the year. If we can get that done by the end of the year, procurement of in-car video and body worn cameras about 60 to 90 days out. It depends on the month. Sometimes they're closer to 60, sometimes they're closer to 90. We just don't know what that's going to look like. And then once that, we have the camera installation, we have February through April in there, only because we don't know how long, when we're going to be able to get on their schedule, install all of our stuff for us. We won't know what that timeline will be until we get the contract finalized and we get on their, on their schedule. So talking with the rep, it appears that what we see before us, the May 2025 officer and staff training, that's a pretty conservative, like, that's worst-case scenario. We should be better than that, but I'd rather be realistic in case there's some hiccups. They're not promising body worn cameras in February, it ends up being May. So what are we proposing? We're proposing that for 48 on body worn cameras, we will get new cameras every 30 months with Axon. So every two and a half years, they will take our cameras currently and they will send us the latest and greatest of what they have put out. We're proposing 29 in-car cameras, which will replace all of our current in-car cameras so that we're not running two systems. We're just running one system that communicates with each other, and it significantly will improve staff time in trying to manage the video and getting the video to where it needs to go. And we would get, we get new in-car cameras every five years. So every new contract cycle, if we continue to go with Axon, they would replace all of our latest and greatest that they have come out with. We're also excited about this. I was able to demonstrate this at an Axon event with real-time translation. And basically what that is, the body worn cameras now have the capability to offer translation services in 50-plus different languages. So officers who go out in the field with community members who either don't speak English or have limited English capability that they'll be able to communicate them right away in an emergency situation to find out what's wrong, what do they need, where we need to go versus now, an officer will either have to try to use their phone, or they got to call out of time that way. Like I said, I demonstrated- Like I said, I demonstrated this in Spanish. I was very impressed with what it, what it did, but I believe this is something that the community would really benefit from, is officers being able to communicate with individuals in their native, in their native language. We're proposing the redaction assistant, and this is technology that Axon has that allows staff to redact video. So, I believe on one of the presentations, Axon said that for every 10 minutes that the redaction assistant needs to work, it's about two hours of staff time, so it significantly increases staff productivity in getting video where it needs to be, because there's going to be a lot of video. It's very time-consuming, and someone still has to put eyes on and review all the video before it can be released. And then Axon Community Request. Basically, this is, this is a part of the Axon suite that allows for community members who have either film, ring cameras, or any type of evidence that they want to get to the police that we can put out there, that would go straight into our evidence system without an officer having to go out there, classify it, and put it in the system. So, we're super excited about this. It's something that could have been very useful, useful to us in a, if it had happened, and I believe the other agencies are using this as well. And then Axon Performance is basically just the ability to get key body worn camera metrics. It tells us if cameras are working, how often they're on, making sure, you know, we can review videos, making sure videos are categorized correctly, all these things that if they're not checked and done correctly, significantly increases staff time. So, with that, I'll take any questions.
All right, any questions?
I was just thinking on the redaction assistant. So, you have one staff person that will be reviewing the, each, so each, how many officers do you have? And then you have one person that'll be reviewing each day's, each patrol, when they're on off patrol, they have to review that day's patrol?
No, the Records Division has six support personnel and one record supervisor. And so, when, as the video comes in, it doesn't automatically get reviewed and redacted, it only gets redacted upon a public disclosure request from a member of the public.
Okay.
And then what happens is, is they rotate, so there's not one person that has to do all the body worn camera in-car video redaction, everyone kind of takes their share, so one person's not being, not being overloaded. We just added two more personnel to, to provide this functionality.
Okay, so that's just on the redaction. I was just imagining, so when, again, though, when these come in, does somebody review these every day then, is just, just an officer review the cameras?
No, they're only reviewed when they need to be reviewed or an option, or cases that go to the prosecutor's office, go straight there without, without redaction, of course. Really, they only have to be reviewed is when they, when a member of the public asks for our public disclosure request, and we need to make sure we're redacting the appropriate items.
I could imagine, it was just like, that would be a lot.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, I was a good analysis, the, you did mention the, I thought I had surveillance, and then the Axon families, was it just that? Something about Axon family and then surveillance, did I hear that correctly?
I don't understand that question.
Go back like two slides over.
I'll get to you next, Councilmember Jefferson.
Yeah, so my question is very simple. So, in terms of the data that is collected in the field, we keep this data on our server, right? And we don't share this data with anybody?
The data is stored in the Axon cloud, which is, which is secured, and it's only accessed by us. Axon doesn't share any data or any videos with any organizations or anyone else, it's our data.
Okay. Do we, would we, or how are we looking to have an IRA that specifically mentioned that, that our data is shared with anybody, given the fact that the state of Washington does that, that one Washington where data is not shared? So, I want us to be cognizant of what the state rules are and that we're following that. So, before, before this camera's become our operation in the field, I will request that you and Chief come to Public Insurance Safety Committee and tell us exactly how that IRA, if there is going to be one, because I don't know if there's one, how that will work, so that at least we'll know what the policies are around that.
Okay. So, just for clarification, the, the video that comes off of the body worn cameras is our video, and it's evidence. The only way it gets released is by public disclosure request, or if we transfer it to the prosecutor's office, which is, is, you know, so it is very different from flock camera systems or other camera readers that, that you're probably been seeing a lot of information about. So, this is evidence, and it's strictly controlled by state law, and it isn't shared, so to speak. It's not shared information, it is ours.
Thank you, thank you. I think I, I got, thank you.
All right, I'll go to Councilmember Jefferson, then I'll go to Councilmember Althausser.
Yes, is the SOP or the policy book written on it? For example, when to turn it off, when to turn it on, et cetera?
Hold on, Chief Mason.
So, we have a working policy. It's something that we actually have to have, by state law, we have to have a working policy in place before we can even test the system. So, before we can even have an officer put one on, we're required to have a working policy. But that policy is very much in line with our neighboring jurisdictions, and one of the things that I had told council quite a while ago, is that before we finalize the policy, I am going to reach out to each of you individually and kind of walk through what the policy means for our organization, and get input from you, and then we're also looking at different ways we can field input from our community in addition to what we've already done.
Mason?
Councilmember Althausser.
Thank you. So, two questions. Chief, you mentioned the ability for prosecutor, the prosecutor's office to be able to get this as evidence, but the same is true for council, correct? Like, if the video may contain exonerating evidence of wrongdoing, then defense council has suitable access to be able to pull and retrieve video evidence, correct?
Of course. So, the defense has two separate ways that they can get this evidence. One is through the prosecutor's office, the prosecutor's office is required to provide it to them through their disclosure process. We've also seen, the defense has also started doing public disclosures on cases directly to us, so they have two different pathways for getting this, this information.
Okay. And my second question is sort of a follow-up to Councilmember Jefferson's question on the, the working policy. So, that does not require councilmatic approval, correct, for the procedures for like, when a camera has to be on and what those rules are and things like?
Correct.
Okay. And you mentioned sort of reaching out individually. I think like, this isn't according to the timeline going to happen until 2026, which is after the time in which I will no longer be on the council, but I, I think like, looking forward, it sort of seems like maybe that would be a ripe topic for session as opposed to sort of individual outreach, so that there is some sort of public modicum of transparency for when the cameras are on, when they're off, how all of that information is collected and works. Because I, I know that in our, our neighboring jurisdictions, some of our council colleagues on other councils have received a lot of public inquiry about, you know, what those policies are and the rationale for, for why they exist and why they are the way that they are. So, I, I'd encourage this, the Public Safety Committee to, to have sort of a work session to, to talk about those things once it gets closer to rolled out.
Of course, whatever works best for this. And like I said, the other piece too is, because we do work so tightly with our neighboring jurisdictions, one of our goals was to align our policy with theirs, specifically with Lacey and Olympia, because, you know, our, our jurisdiction boundaries are, you know, not transparent, and so that's, our policy aligns almost identically with theirs, but we can have the discussion. I'd love to have the discussion at a work session and field input and identify, you know, and have the discussion on, you know, where, where do you want us to be and how do we get there as, as an organization?
Yeah, one of the other questions I had, which is no longer as relevant, was like, if we're providing mutual aid in a different jurisdiction, like if we are helping respond to a very serious event in Olympia, does that mean that the policies governing the cameras in Olympia take precedent over the policies that we have in Tumwater? But if they're the same, then that question becomes a figure out and solve.
So, first of all, our officers are governed by our policies, so in mutual aid, our officers dictate when our officers would activate or not activate, just like it is with use of force and pursuit. But also, along the lines of just saying is that our policy is going to be nearly identical for activation and deactivation, so I don't know there will be much conflict. Actually, Deputy Chief Keelis is the subject matter expert on that, and he could weigh in if there's, if he has anything else.
No, we pretty much mirrored our policies with Olympia and Lacey, so that officers had the same expectations no matter what jurisdiction they were in, and Olympia and Lacey's policies are very much in line with expectations that I think the community would expect for when they should be on and when they shouldn't be.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great, any other questions? Great, thank you. I, I know that this has been a long time coming, and, and it's good to, you know, these types of very complex things just do not happen overnight, especially get infrastructure of staff and, and all of that up to speed, it, it just is time-consuming, so really appreciate all the hard work that your department's been doing, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we are now going to go to public comment portion. So, at this time, we'll receive public comment, so you may comment on items related to city business, and there was a sign-up sheet at the back of the room, which I am being handed, and so when I call your name, please come to the podium, speak into the microphone, state your name and contact information for the record. Each individual will be limited to one three-minute session, and we do have a clock for your remarks, regardless of the number of topics you wish to address. All comments shall be directed towards council as a whole and not to individual council members, and not to members of the audience, and so also asking to refrain from disruptive behavior. So, with that, we have Justin Hunt, if you could come to the podium and state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Justin Hunt. Reside at 8617 Kimmy Loop Southwest here in Tumwater, and phone number's 253-904-4140 if you need it. I'm originally from New Jersey, so I talk quick, so I'll be under the three minutes. My name is Justin Hunt, I'm a longtime Tumwater resident, an Army Combat Veteran, retired, father, grandfather, and a deeply invested member of this community. Professionally, I actually serve as a Senior Vice President of Real Estate and Bank Facilities for Heritage Bank, which means I oversee multiple parts of Tumwater. I'm very familiar with property security, the requirements, liability exposure, and the risks associated with any unmanaged or unmonitored sites. I'm here tonight because I've seen the early warning signs before, both in my career and in my life, and I know what happens when they're ignored. I live near the intersection of Kimmy and 76th and Center Street, so just down the road over here, where the Port of Olympia owns a vacant parcel of land. For several years, my family, my neighbors, and I have repeatedly witnessed people carrying bags, tents, and belongings into the wooded area, as well as RVs and trucks parked off the road. We've seen garbage, abandoned items, and the kind of quiet, consistent activity that indicates that people are living within these trees. I've got the port, I've also contacted Tumwater Police multiple times, including both in-person here and phone calls. Responses have been brief, they've been cursory, and the problem continues to grow. Under the Tumwater Municipal Code 8.04, abandoned property, garbage, and unsanitary conditions constitute a public nuisance, and the property owner, which in this case is the Port of Olympia, is responsible for the abatement. Under TMC 1859, any homeless encampment must have a host agency, security plan, sanitation measures, and clear rules, none of that's happened. State level, proposed legislation as SB 5028 recognizes unauthorized camping on public properties creates safety hazards, health risks, and long-term financial burdens on the taxpayers. There's a Supreme Court ruling, and City of Grants passed First Johnson 2024 affirming cities may enforce this generally applicable laws against camping. I'm going to skip some of this due to the shortened time, but I'm not speaking as a professional who just understands the risk. As a combat veteran, I've seen and trained, recognized danger before it escalates, and as a father and grandfather who wants children, including my own grandchildren, to be able to safely walk, bike, and drive past this property. Not asking for anything extreme, just early proactive action before this becomes far more dangerous, costly, and difficult to address. I care about the safety of our residents here in Tumwater, care about the well-being of individuals who may be living in unsafe hidden conditions within those trees. Respectfully ask that the council follow up with the pourback to the neighborhood on steps that will be taken, and I do thank you for your time and your commitment to the community, keeping Tumwater safe and your service to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Nicandry.
David Nicandry, 505 Fourth Avenue Southwest, just up the hill from Councilmember Althausser. You know, for a long time, I would come here and I would complain about stuff, and lately I've been coming in a more commendatory fashion. By the way, I reserve the right to go back to that moment, if, if need be, but I've been, I've had occasion to come by and thank people and acknowledge them, and this is, this is awkwardly self-congratulatory to a point, but it's really about Tumwater history. I want to thank Councilmember Jefferson and Councilmember Swarthout to coming to a recent presentation at the Schmidt Management Lead the Tumwater Initiative. I mean, I've known for, I'm proud of saying, and I often do, that I was elected to this council in the mid-1970s, so I've been around a while, and it struck me that this community has always had a sense, a sense of its distinctive history. I mean, all communities have history, but Tumwater, it has a distinctive history, certain evocative themes, out of proportion to its size and perhaps perception. And I just wanted to acknowledge the enthusiasm and the support of the two council members that came to this presentation. I think their presence warrants the support that we need to move this agenda forward. We have a meeting Thursday night to go to the implementation phase, be over here at the fire station, that is, that's where it'll be, right? So, that's it, I just want to thank you for coming out and showing your support by being there in person to represent to the larger community of the distinctive history we have in this community. Thank you.
Great, thank you. That's all that I had signed up in the room, do we have any online?
No, we do not.
So, is there anyone else in the council chambers that would like to speak and make public comment? Not seeing any, we will now move to the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So, move.
Okay, who is first?
She's first.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Swarthout, second by Councilmember Agabi. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, the motion carries with council meeting on November 3rd, payment vouchers, ordinance number O 2025-016, ad valorem regular period 2026, supplemental agreement number one to SCJ Alliance for the I-5 State Route 12193rd Avenue interchange improvements, service provider agreement with Sergeant Engineering for on-call engineering services amendment one, your agreement with SANTAC for Pioneer Park Restoration Project Amendment Four, and land lease with E-Scope Consortium, Inc. for the GPS station at Tumwater Hill Park. So, with that, we will now move to council considerations, and the first item is the 2026 legislative agenda, and a city administrator parts will present.
Good evening, council members. I, I have the pleasure of introducing our lobbyists who are helping us with this state legislative session. So, first of all, I'd like to introduce Katie Whittier, she's the Affairs for CFM Advocates, and with her is Brian Enslo, who is the Principal with Arbitus Consulting, and after their presentation, coming to you with- And after their presentation, coming to you with their recommendation for our next steps with regard to our 2026 Washington State Legislative Agenda. There you go.
Thanks so much. I'm Katie Whittier. It's great to be here. You probably saw me a couple weeks ago at your work session, so we're going to keep this relatively high level of the review of what we're looking at for the legislature. And I do have a couple of updates as well that just came through in the last, oh, I would say 36 hours, that you might find interesting, so we'll mention that. We have a couple of slides. I don't know if it'll be helpful, probably, to have those up there, actually. Go ahead and move on to the slide after that. So as you'll recall, we are going in as your top priorities this year, all being funding requests. There obviously will be a lot of policy issues that come up that will be of concern, and we'll be tracking those for you as well. But we're going to spend a lot of time, effort, in getting some potential funding coming your way. Now, one of the updates here, there was a revenue forecast that came out today, this afternoon, and the bottom line has changed. Some folks, especially appropriations chairman, are seeing that as great news. It hasn't gotten worse. But pretty much what we told you before, we're still going into what looks like a significant deficit year. The four-year outlook is looking about, excuse me, a $6 billion deficit that they're going to be grappling with. That is less than what was talked about last year, but it's still significant. And so you're starting to see some revenue proposals come out in the news, starting to see some of the early conversations about efficiencies and other things. But the good, bad, neutral news is that it's unchanged. So we are going into the legislative session approximately where we thought we were. We do have some commitments to move forward with restoring your Habitat Conservation Plan funding to secure, so it can be renovated into prairie land and open up development opportunities across Tumwater. That request is, was $2 million, remains $2 million, and we have some commitments to go after that money. I am fairly optimistic going in that that is, that is something that we can pursue with confidence, and I hope to be able to deliver some great news in that respect. We'll also go in asking for support on your Planned Action EIS related to the brewery district. It's already underway. Your early phase of the EIS with the advisory committee is already going. There is a good amount of regional attention on the issue, just given how visible that area is. The $500,000 is a healthy ask, but I think something that legislators would be willing to consider. We do not have open support for that yet, mostly because we just are getting started in that respect. And then the third priority, being the East Street Connection design phase. We talked about this last time at the work session. The chances of a transportation package in this session are very low. I'm not optimistic we will see progress here. But being able to start talking about it now and preparing for future sessions where a transportation opportunity opens up, I think is extremely important to keeping that project moving forward and also ascertain what the support looks like within the legislature. Yep.
And I think to buttress what Katie was saying, many of you maybe saw a, an open letter from the Senate Ways and Means Chair to individuals saying, "I'm not accepting any more budget requests." And although that is very valid to take into consideration and help, like, manage expectations around, like, what is the context, it is important to say, that's with respect to the operating budget. There's still going to be some capital opportunities. There's still, but we'll see, but there's, in all the time I've been monitoring the legislature, I have full community projects listed, so I would still highly anticipate it. So I do think it makes sense to continue to move forward with capital budget requests. I don't think it's tone deaf, and I think it would be, it would not be our recommendation to not move forward with things, even in light of that conversation. It is the job of the budget gatekeepers to tell you there's no money, even when there is money, and in this case, especially when it is very tight. I did want to add that concept.
Thank you. And I am hearing some other folks say they're very cautious about their budget requests, which might help, you know.
I have a question too, Alon, because you understand, like, budget provisos that somehow that get slipped in, are they even looking, well, are those going to be known to budget provisos that get slipped in? Do you have any knowledge about that?
So I would be surprised if there weren't some budget additions. Even in the leanest years, there are ideas that have enough political support or enough financial necessity that they do materialize. And so to your case specifically, it's just done as a budget proviso, or if it's a specific item in, you know, an agency's budget or something like that. I would be surprised some. I also wouldn't be surprised if you see cute things like old budget tricks where it's, say, where instead of adding money, it just says with NC's existing budget, they have to do something.
Right.
So I would anticipate seeing things like that as well.
So we need to have some eyes on some of these things?
100%.
Yes. Thank you.
Great. We can go into a little bit more detail on each of these. So you're familiar with this project, the HCP project, getting land under city control so that you can begin to restore that, make it into proper habitat to get US Fish and Wildlife to sign up, sign off on in HCP, and then move forward with your plan to be able to develop parcels and use money from that development fund more purchases of land going forward. So extremely important to the future of Tumwater, extremely important for goals like housing and jobs, and I'll understand that. We have heard that loud and clear, that they understand that and the importance of it. This is a combined effort with the Port of Olympia, and we will be working together with them to see if we can, we can move this back under, under your purview, since you did have this money before, and it is time to restore that. We can move on to the next one. So Planned Action EIS, again, is a very visible project to anyone, not just this region, anyone who travels I-5, and all of the legislators do. So we do expect to have some conversation about it. I imagine there will be some more attention in the news that will come up because your advisory committee work is underway. As they're scheduled, then we can more closely ask for this $550,000 to move forward with the next phase of that Planned Action EIS, which should take about 12 months. And finally, the design for the East Street Connection, moving into that design phase. We had really good, robust discussion a couple weeks ago at that work session, just how early we still are in that process. Ultimately, we anticipate that that design phase is going to be about $6 million in needed funds. There's other funds already put together for the work, as I understand it, but that state funding is going to be really, really important. Looking long-term, having an east-west corridor to connect the community will really facilitate movement as we grow and facilitate economic development as the brewery district also comes together. So an extremely important piece of the overall Tumwater puzzle, and we're planning now to get, to get some funding going forward in the future opportunity arises. Now, one thing I did want to bring up that we didn't talk about last time, and I've heard about since, you may recall a couple years ago, an effort around the wildland urban interface when it comes to fires and development standards at the edges of communities. There was a map that, as I understand it, a couple years ago, that caused Tumwater some concern, and hearing that that map is back, it's been modified a little bit, but probably not to the point that it would make City of Tumwater comfortable. I'm trying to track down more information and get that to you, but that's an example of one of the things that's popping up policy-wise that could have an impact that we're going to be, going to be tracking for sure.
I think, we think DNR has been vetting that with the fire community broadly, but I don't think it's been distributed largely with the city community yet, so it's something we've heard.
Yep.
Again, Brian Enslo here. It has been, it's our understanding, and it's been traditional that you've adopted by proxy AWC's priorities as well. Councilmember, to your point earlier, especially this year with respect to state shared revenues, some of those major revenue sources that the state shares directly with the City of Tumwater is the County Criminal Justice Council's cannabis revenue, things of that nature. So we, we know that those are critical to provide ongoing services that are performed here at the, at the city, and so we want to make sure that those are protected. There has been a lot of legislation and a lot of interest in housing. There has been somewhat of a, you know, a narrative around what, whether cities have been good partners or bad partners. We know there's 296 cities out there, so I think having a priority at AWC that really shows support for moving forward in a progressive manner around housing supply, I think, is valuable to kind of try to combat that narrative and really approach it in a proactive way. Indigent defense, we know with the adoption of the new court rules around caseload standards for misdemeanants, Blake shifting more and more of, of, of kind of the emphasis around SUD and enforcement of that nature to cities as well, has driven needs. And then lastly, you know, every year when the Washington State Department of Transportation submits their, their, their budget, they say, "Oh, by the way, we have hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars of deferred maintenance." That story is true for local governments as well. Preservation and maintenance is a key concern. And in addition to that, whether it's grant funds for bike and pedestrian, safe routes to school, Transportation Investment Board, Freight Mobility Strategy Investor Board, things like that, really important to make sure that local resources are maintained as we're at this key transition point between moving away from gas tax and perhaps adopting other methods for providing for transportation resources, such as like a road usage charge or things like that. Resources are included in that mix moving forward. Can I leave my slide?
So that's a high-level overview of what we're looking forward to in the legislative session, coming right up. Any other questions we can answer?
Any questions? Councilmember Von Holz.
I'm just wondering, because I'm hearing from other local municipalities, like, I know that there's a county that wasn't able to make payroll, there's a city that's filing for bankruptcy. Does Tumwater being fiscally responsible, is that helpful? Or is it, like, we might have to, sorry, you guys are going to have to take it on the chin because you've been doing such a good job because we've got it. Not that these other municipalities are doing a bad job, but like, their, their issues are a little bit more extreme than what you have right now. Is that a concern?
I mean, I would, I don't want to be glib, but I would reflect the question back to you. I mean, just being fiscally review and your community, first and foremost, right? But I think your question is asking us, in the legislative process.
Right. In their, in their.
Yeah, it is, because it hasn't been easy for you to do that, right? And you've had to make tough choices about what you, what you fund and what you move forward. And so I think that's, that adds to the flavor. So I, I don't think there's any concern, and I think you should be proud of the work you've done. But again, my, my feeling is that that hasn't come without, you know, opportunity costs and things like that, and that's part of the story as well.
I'd add that it puts you in a strong position, right? We want to invest in places where they know what to do with the money, right? So I think it helps us make an ask for you. There's not a whole lot of appetite at the state level to bail out cities if they can avoid it, right? So that they don't have to do that with you, gives you that credibility.
Any other questions? All right. I think we have to take action on this, so.
I have the EIS job tonight, and so that's to make the recommendation.
Hold on a moment. Councilmember Althausser, did you have something?
I, excuse me, sorry. Yeah, I was just going to say that I'll be abstaining from the vote, just as a legislative employee, I won't be taking action or taking part in the vote, so I'll be abstaining. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
And so our staff recommendation is that council approves the city's 2026 Legislative Agenda.
I'll take, I'd like to make the motion to approve the city's 2026 Legislative Agenda.
And I second that motion.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Swarthout, seconded by Councilmember Jefferson. Any discussion on the motion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. And Councilmember Althausser will be sustaining?
Abstaining.
Abstaining, sorry. It's been a long, all right. So the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, you might be sustaining too, you know. The next item is Alternative Response Team Grant Agreement with the Association of Washington Cities, and you will be presenting.
Yes. Yeah, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for this opportunity to have a couple real short presentations, ones that will be real, real short. These are really tied together, so this first one is just really talking about our grant opportunity with AWC, with Association of Washington Cities, to help fund our CARES program. So for this, and I'll get more into the CARES program again, just as, you know, reeducation of what that program is. But this, what this grant is going to potentially do with your approval is currently our CARES employee works butt for us, so what this grant's going to help do is staff that physician 40 hours a week, which is, which is great. The grant reimburses the $111,178 for the, basically, state's fiscal year, July 1st, 2025 through 2026. And then we do have the opportunity to extend it two times through 2028 with a simple amendment signed by both cities. So, like I said, this one's going to be real short, so that's the recommended action. I'd be happy to answer any questions related to the grant, if you have any.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion? Because we'll probably have to do these separately, so.
I'll move to authorize the mayor to sign the Alternative Response Team Grant Agreement with the Association of Washington Cities.
I'll second. Member Von Holz, seconded by Councilmember Swarthout. Any discussion on the motion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. And your next item is the FLO agreement with the City of Olympia, Amendment One.
Perfect. Well, thank you for, for a little of that. It's like the chicken and the eggs, we got that part done. So this is the FD CARES Amendment, number one, with the City of Olympia. So once again, our CARES program, what CARES stands for is Assistance, Referral, and Education Services. This is a collaboration that we started back in November of 2024, so almost a year ago. It's our partnership with Olympia Fire Department, and they have several CARES members that are, work throughout the City of Olympia as well. Once again, currently, our CARES employee that's dedicated to the City of Tumwater works about 20 hours a week with the approval of that grant, and then going through this, that'll be now a full-time position, which is exciting for us. A little bit of data and a little bit of information here. The, through October, so basically January through October this year, our CARES, Ariana Gomez is her name, she has done 55 referrals through October. One thing that the CARES program does a great job is reducing the amount of 911 calls. I'll get into that here in a sec. The other thing, we're able to go out and educate some of our adult care facilities, like, for example, Olympics West. We go out there quite regularly to have conversations with them about increasing their services or what, how can we help them? Once again, they work in collaboration, which is our new Tumwater Mobile Outreach Team, the Crisis Team, that was just started up back here in October. They are actually working in collaboration with our Tumwater Mobile Outreach Team that Olympia helps us run, so that's exciting as well. Once again, it'll be 40 hours a week. The numbers here are for 2026, so that, as you can see, that's our agreement with the City of Olympia to pay for our CARES specialist.
And I, and I do see Councilmember Jefferson's hand. Did you have something related to?
Yes, I did, Mayor. So is this individual a social worker?
Yes. Social worker, really, their, kind of their expertise is also just knowing what's out there and being able to put that person, whoever the referrals for, in contact with whatever services they potentially may need. Yeah.
Okay. So their degree is in social work?
Yeah, she, Ariana, Ariana, actually, I think she just ended up finishing her degree within this last year, correct?
Okay. Thank you.
Once again, this is linked to the, the agreement that you just passed. A little bit more data here. One of the, it's kind of hard to see, and I apologize. The top four reasons that our CARES teams get referrals are, the first is health support services, and what that can entail is they get referred for physical and mental health, physical therapy, occupational therapies, maybe some specialized doctors, companion care. Those are just some examples of kind of that referral. The next one up on this chart is caregiver, caregiver services. And one of the, typically the things that are being done for that And one of the, typically the things that are being done for that are caregivers, senior housing, assisted living, and skilled nursing, so maybe referring them to those facilities. There might be a recent fall, could be onset of dementia, so they're really helping them navigate some of the needs that that potential patient or person being referred needs. 911 dependency, this is an area that certainly is a benefit to us in the Fire Department and Fire EMS. One of our enthusiastic customers, let's say, that utilizes 911, we saw a 50% reduction in calls from Ariana going out and having communication with, with that resident, so. General medical care, it's kind of a catch-all, but they also help, it could be going out and getting dental work or finding a primary care doctor. So a lot of those are, we were kind of talking about a lot of social services and just plugging them into spots that maybe they didn't have access to or just didn't know about, so. So that's kind of the, the graph on the left, one on the right really is more the age, as you can kind of see, a lot of our referrals are 65-plus, but Ariana has had experience throughout the age range, so. And with that, just so you're aware, Ariana Gomez is the second one on the right. That's, that's our CARES specialist that is specifically for Tumwater. So with that, that's the recommended action questions, if you have any.
All right, any questions?
Somehow I thought it was someone that went out and like provided healthcare to the frequent flyers, that's kind of what I was thinking.
Right.
That's not, okay.
No, they're, so they're not, you know, EMTs or paramedics or, you know, LPNs currently, you know, there is some programs that do that, and that might be the next phase of these programs, is.
Right, so we don't have to dispatch an EMT on a fire.
Yeah, you know, there is programs that do have like RNs go out or, or, you know, like a, that can maybe write a prescription, you know, maybe it's a PA or something like that, but currently, that's not, it's more social work, and then, honestly, and there's sometimes that they drive them to a doctor's appointment, you know, so just providing the services, yeah.
Thank you for the clarification, appreciate that.
Any other?
So, yes, um, yes, so, so these individuals, or she is in an office, and is she, I know she's not screening 911 calls, but tell me what a day is like for her.
Well, I know she's at the fire station, because I see her. So she actually has a staff vehicle that we provide for her, and how it really works is either somebody calls, you know, wanting their services, because we've put it out there, or a lot of times our crews go out, see a patient that they feel like needs services, whether it's a repeat 911 caller, or maybe somebody that had a fall but could use some fall preventions, things around the house. So our crews will actually refer through our, our incident reporting, and she'll get that case, and when she comes on that next day, she'll go out, make contact with the resident, and not all the times, they don't always want her, her help, but a good portion, 85% of the time, they are successful in reaching out, making contact, making a difference for that person. So it's, it's really that referral, mostly from our crews that see them out in the field.
Okay, makes it a little bit more clear. Thank you very much, Chief.
All right, any other questions? All right, so are we ready to entertain a motion?
I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the FD CARES Interlocal Agreement, Amendment Number One, with the City of Olympia.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Jefferson, seconded by Councilmember Agabi. Any discussion on the motion? With that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you all.
Yeah, I think this is a very beneficial program for our city, and I think it really helps the residents and our staff. Next is ordinance number O2025-008, which is amending the Tumwater Municipal Code, Section 12.32, for public parks. And our director, Chuck Denny, will be presenting.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Yes, here tonight to talk to you about something that's been on hold for quite some time. The general government, this update in November of 2023, the council discussed that at a meeting in, on November 21st of 2023, and then we had kind of a big welcome to Tumwater for city administrator Lisa Parks, with a very large public meeting at Tumwater High School, and people that were extremely upset and maybe didn't understand what we were trying to achieve with an update of the parks ordinances. Basically, I mean, in a nutshell, what we're doing here is we're taking our existing park ordinances, the rules that apply to all of our park facilities, and extending them to all city properties. We're not changing the parks ordinances, we're extending those rules to all city properties. So while they, they imply at all of our park facilities and how we operate parks, places like City Hall, the library, both fire stations, the police station office building, the Parks and Recreation Office building, those aren't covered under city parks, so really, it's, well, it's not just a free-for-all, you know, our, our standard ordinances apply, but we don't, we don't have a set of rules for those properties, how we operate them, and how we deal with difficulties on those properties. So seemingly, and easy, back in 2003, we, we expanded our rules from parks to include all city properties. So each of these rules that, that apply to parks really just haven't added at, at all city properties, or we've removed parks and just said city properties, as parks are part of that too. So anyone visiting, participating, being on city property, the same rules apply anywhere in the city, whether you're on a park or whether you're on just standard city property. So I was gonna try to refrain from reading through the 27 park rules and telling you that city property has been added to each one, that's in your packet, and if you have, you have specific questions on any of the park rules in the ordinance, I'd be happy to address those individually with your concerns. The only thing that was added is, if someone is excluded from a park, from a city property, and that could, a violation of ordinance, which may or may not fall under the jurisdiction or the handling of, by the Police Department. If it's something in parks that they do that's maybe not necessarily a misdemeanor or an incident, I, I still have the ability to exclude someone from, from a park for a certain period of time, as do the police, whether it's, whether it's a criminal act or not, generally, it would not be if it was in that case. We've added a section on how they can request a hearing and talk to the hearing field. So there, there's an avenue for someone who's excluded from a facility to be able to try to get that rescinded.
I see Councilmember Jefferson has her hand up.
Um, yes, um, I was surprised to see, so these are just updating rules, because there's a rumor out there that when we had that camping in city parks, so this is definitely not it, and I was surprised to see that you couldn't pick flowers in the park, and I am guilty of that, because every once in a while at Historic Park, you have some beautiful roses. So I will not pick the roses from now on, but thank you.
I don't even know what to say.
Angela Chief Mason is getting up.
Yeah, yeah, we can't have, we can't have everyone in the public picking all their flowers, we don't have any pollinators in our parks.
Yeah. Councilmember Althausser.
I think a lot of this makes sense for having things be equal across city properties. The questions that I have are mostly around the exclusionary orders. From your description, Chuck, that sounds like something that already exists, is that right? Like, like we already have the ability to order that someone isn't allowed in place if they violate some of the rules? Like, like we have criminal misdemeanors right now, but I wasn't aware that we actually have the ability to bar someone from being in a public space.
That, that, being able to bar someone has existed always. Them having the ability to go to the hearing examiner has not, and I can feel Karen wants to talk on this subject.
Gosh, that seems loud. Yes, we are, we have the ability for the Parks Director to issue an exclusionary letter under the current code, and for now, but it's anywhere from one day to, I believe, a year. And it, and we also do have provision that a hearing before the hearing examiner can be requested, but we didn't actually have procedures on what that would look like, and that it would be told during the appeal period. And so now we've added those pre-deprivation procedural aspects to the code. We've also, as you mentioned, changed much of this from criminal charges to civil infraction. So we've made those corrections, I'll call them, in addition to just expanding these rules from parks to all of city property.
And are, is, the exclusionary order is not linked to civil liability by way of process, correct? It's not like?
No, it's purely, if he, you know, if he violated a rule, we can, rather than a criminal charge or an infraction, we can issue an exclusionary letter.
And so who, so, so Chuck is the director of parks, you would be the issuing authority of an exclusionary letter to a park. What, who would be the authority to the police station, or the fire station, or for City Hall, or for other public properties that this would now apply to?
It's, it's any enforcement officer, so anyone from the Police Department, or perhaps city code enforcement.
So anyone in the Police Department could issue that, so there's a modicum of discretion for issuing an exclusionary order versus a civil liability infraction, if it was the police station, or really any of these properties? Does, what, Karen, can you talk a little bit about the amount of discretion the hearing examiner possesses in terms of being able to waive the exclusionary order on appeal?
The, the new language establishes that the violation has to be proved by a preponderance of the evidence, and so the hearing examiner basically could uphold or deny the violation, uphold the exclusionary letter, can also modify the length of time.
Okay, so someone could theoretically be, theoretically, a police officer could issue an exclusionary letter to someone who is hanging out on City Hall for too long? And if someone wanted to call and violated that exclusionary order, what would then be the consequence of violating that?
I can't remember, I apologize, but I can't, typically, it, there's a, it would be included in the letter about what the next violation would be, but I, I think it would be an infraction.
That would also be a civil infraction.
Correct. So it would be progressive. You would have the exclusionary letter, then you would potentially have an infraction, and it would go from there.
And that would then also go to the hearing examiner for review?
Correct.
Which would have a preponderance standard, so it's like, someone, if, let's say hypothetically, someone was coming to City Hall to pay their water bill, because they didn't have a stamp and don't use the online thing, and if they were exclusionary letter, but they showed up at City Hall to pay their bill.
So.
Hearing examiner would just say, well, by a preponderance of the evidence.
Yeah, so, so I don't, I don't think that someone would receive an exclusionary letter from, from City Hall that would not have an exception to come do city business, legitimate city business would be allowed. So paying a bill, coming to a council meeting, and those sorts of things would, would still be allowed under an exclusionary letter, but you, you couldn't continue whatever behavior it was that was in violation of those rules on that property.
But there isn't anything in this draft ordinance that would prevent someone from issuing that? It's likely that that wouldn't be issued, but is there language in the order that official city business is exempt from exclusionary letters?
Not specifically.
Okay.
Chuck, when was the last time an exclusionary letter was issued?
We've never done it. You know, typically, if something happens, you know, and it's been in park facilities in the past, you know, we, we work with the police, and they, they assist, and, and if it goes on, if it's, if it's a larger issue, then they, they handle it. It's not something as Parks and Recreation Director that I've been issuing, or have ever issued.
Those are all great questions, and I think that we'll draft a template, so some of these items need to be addressed in that letter if one gets issued.
Okay, any questions? And to hold the mic. Sorry, Joan, I see your hand up.
Councilmember Kathy, you're, you're muted.
That's fine, Michael, I, I wanted to hear the questions and answers anyway, it's If I remember, didn't the last time we talked about this, we talked mainly about sleeping in the parks, or camping in the parks, or camping on city property? I mean, this seems like a, either a different or an additional conversation about the one we had last time that people in the community were very, very concerned about.
It, it was, it started out last time as the very same conversation, but the, the conversation quickly got turned to a feeling in the general public that we, we were passing an ordinance that would almost promote homeless encampments in city parks. And regardless of the explanation, and, and administrative parks, tremendous, with a whole bunch of angry citizens, some people just couldn't be convinced that we weren't trying to sneak through something to build homeless camps in parks. So, asked, a lot of cities have gone through this, some, some court cases have been settled, and, and we're now at the point where we can say that we are still not allowing people to sleep overnight in city parks, and now that also includes on city property.
Can I ask a question?
So, so then, the situations that Michael just brought up, and you said what would happen to someone if, if they did certain things, do we have some, something for people sleeping in a park, not camping, but sleeping on a bench and leaving in the morning, or that kind of thing? Just trying to remember all these, you know, conversations we had. So how is, and I remember we waited all this time for the Supreme Court.
So I'll take this one, Councilmember Kathy.
Okay.
One of the 27 things that are not allowed in city parks, and after adoption of this ordinance, city property, is, I believe it's called loitering in the nighttime, which is essentially sleeping at night. In the previous version that was being reviewed in 2023, there was a new section that was being proposed in an attempt to demonstrate that the City of Tumwater was complying with what was commonly, what is commonly called the Grants Pass case, at that Boise, excuse me, Boise case, there was Grants Pass in there also somewhere. But, so we were trying to add, it said, if you, if you are sleeping in the nighttime, and you are not, we are not able to find, excluded from enforcement of that particular provision. This code, because the Supreme Court Act, the US Supreme Court has taken action on the Boise and Grants Pass cases, we no longer have that particular provision in this draft ordinance. So all 27 of the prohibitions that are listed would be applicable across the board, and there are no exclusionary, there's no exclusionary enforcement with regard to any of those 27 provisions.
So, it's found, sleeping on a bench at night in our park, they have, they have no recourse, they have no whatever, you're just, what, what is this? How do we handle that? Do we just kick them off the bench, or give them one of these letters, or what is the situation?
The police officers will use the same discretion that they use when they are enforcing those regulations, and, and others similar, and they will use their discretion to, to manage each individual situation. I, I don't believe our police officers ever just kick some the bench and tell them to go home. I believe what they would do is approach that person, indicate that they are not allowed to sleep where they're currently sleeping, and then, to the degree that they're able to sleep where they're currently sleeping, and then, to the degree that they're able to, and to the degree that that person is willing to accept some assistance, I believe they would try to work with that person to get them somewhere. And now that we actually have a crisis response, we now have a team away, and a resource for our police officers to use, where there might be somebody who, for example, is in some sort of a mental health crisis, and maybe in a situation where they need some additional assistance, other than just their own volition, to find a place to be. The city of Tomwater continues to have challenges with regard to anything like an emergency shelter available for people in crisis and having difficulty finding a place to sleep at night. There is money in the budget, and the Community Development Department has on their work plan for 2026, an assessment, to, money to do an assessment to understand what is the specific need in the city of Tomwater with regard to emergency shelters, and that transitional housing for homelessness. The hope is that that study and assessment will help us understand what more we need, that we can provide. But for now, the particular ordinance that we're trying to implement is an existing, to our parks, and have applied to our parks for several years, and we're trying to give our Police Department the, in order to be able to provide assistance to people, to approach them when they are doing those negative things on city property as a whole.
We've, we've passed that Tomwater has some beds, or some reservations, or some ability, or something, to take people, like you say, that are willing to go and get a bed. I, I guess that must be somewhere in Olympia. Is that correct?
I do not believe there is a specific emergency shelter that is available for people in immediate crisis. There is a permanent supportive housing situation that's privately run, I believe. We do not track, our police officers, Fire and EMS, and our Community Development Housing staff do not specifically track and are not provided data, how many beds are open at any given point in time. Our police officers understand where those resources are, and, and can try and provide the, a help in that manner, if they, if it's available. If it's not, then that, we just don't have that available resource in the city of Tomwater. We are going to be doing a presentation, we, we do have, because of our crisis response partnership with Olympic Health and Recovery, health, with our, our mobile outreach team, Joe Avalos is going to come and talk with the Public Health and Safety Committee. They do have access and some information that they track, for the services that they provide, at least for people who are in crisis. They give you data on all of the homelessness population, and the people who are experiencing housing issues for Tomwater, who have the ability to provide some data through our mobile outreach team folks, about at least those people who are experiencing homelessness, and the, and as well as a mental health crisis, or behavioral, behavioral health crisis.
Thank you for that. I mean, it'd be for people that, the police, or whoever would encounter, whether they were in a park, or on any city property, because of this ordinance we're passing. So if they found someone sleeping under the tree out here next to City Hall, they, whichever direction that is, they would offer the same thing, I mean, they would go through the same process.
This ordinance gives them the authority and the permission to at least approach and have a conversation with that person. And that allows to make contact with people who are in need of help.
Okay. Okay. Well, I think we've been through, Chuck remembers very well, how many times we've been through how to handle this, this kind of thing over the years. So, I appreciate that we've, it sounds like we've made some progress, and some plans, and some connections, and some things to act toward, you know, homeless people, or someone we do property with some dignity and hope. So, that makes me, that makes me feel better than just to find you, we're gonna, you know, like people say, kick you out, or kick you off, or send you a letter. Sounds like progress to me. So, thanks.
Councilmember Von Holtz?
I'm gonna get on my managing expectations high horse again.
Can you bring your microphone down a little bit?
Yeah, I can't hear you.
Is this better?
Yeah.
Okay. Managing expectations, I saw what was going on on social media, I read the amendments, and I was like, okay, how do we get the public to understand that they maybe misunderstood the intent of what we're trying to do? Also, I'd asked, and unfortunately, Public Health and Safety was canceled because it fell on Veterans Day, to try to, I understand we don't track necessarily how many people who are unsheltered in Tomwater, but our police, who they're dealing with on a day-to-day basis, they know, oh, I'm at Pioneer Park with this person, whatever that is, to try to start building the found who story is, of what the need is. I mean, I love that we have access to benefits, you know, to help, because I think people have in their mind what someone who is unsheltered is, and it isn't always someone who has a health disorder, it's sometimes, well, oftentimes, it's a mom, it's, it's families that have gotten an unexpected bill, and now they can't make rent, and now they don't have anywhere to go, and to move into somewhere else is $6,000 if you're lucky. So I, that's why, I'm excited to know that we're gonna get that presentation, but I still think, even though police and fire might not be doing a daily, like, we've seen this many people who are un, they know their experiences with the public, and I think that that's an important story to tell, so we know what it is, what it isn't. And I think that's where things got a little sideways on social media, is because people are afraid, and Public Health and Safety is so very important, I mean, it's, it's right up there, like, I wanna be, I wanna eat, I wanna, I wanna be housed, I wanna be clothed, I want clean water, and I wanna be safe while I'm in Tomwater. So, it's just a human thing, and I just feel like we could tell our story in a, in a, in a more clear way, so we don't have the panic that I was seeing on social media.
Yeah, the, agreed, especially the first time, when it came back this time, you know, I, I got a few calls, we certainly got calls at, at the parks email, that our, that our marketing, social media person took care of. And then Jason and the Communications Department did a tremendous job of explaining again and again to the public, and reaching out to all the people who came the first time with complaints, here's what it really says, and here's what it really does, to the point where, you know, there's no one.
I thought we were gonna come to a full house, based on what I was on next door, so, I, I'm pleased about that, but I just think that, that there's another piece to the story, like, and I say that because at our neighborhood barbecue, I am lucky, and I live right next to one of Tomwater's finest, and that question was asked, and he did such a beautiful job of explaining the process, what our police officers do, what fire does, and I could see this person who was a little bit relaxed, and know that Tomwater is doing what it needs to do to keep us all safe, including our residents who are unsheltered, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gaby?
So Chuck, and Lisa, and Mayo, on Sunday, I received four emails from Tomwater residents. And the question is, what are we going to be changing regarding this ordinance, and what are we adding? And then the, the other part of the paragraph is, we should not allow homelessness in our park. And I remember we discussed this issue according to what Congress, Councilmember Kathy was getting at, 2023 and 2024. And for the life of me, I don't remember what I ate this morning, so I'm not going to tell you what I ate, because I'm that forgetful. So, I routed the email to Debbie, and to, for them to provide an official statement to, to them. So, Jason, I don't know what you've done, or what you've, this our community, the, the impression is that we are going to be allowing homelessness in our park, that's what it is. So you're talking about exclusion, that's, they're not even talking about that at all. They're just saying we're allowing homelessness in our park, and that is dangerous. So, maybe we ought to put out, again, because we've done it multiple times now, another statement to the community, so they know what this ordinance does, and what it does not do. So that's my two cents.
Jason, you want to talk a little bit about your experience with this issue?
Welcome up. So, Councilmember Gaby, I really appreciate the chance to speak a little bit about this, and also talk about this specific individual. I did go through and top three or four emails, eventually leading the person right to the actual ordinance, under consideration to prove that nothing had changed. We've had the statement about what this ordinance requires, or changes, or doesn't change, on our website for three weeks. We reached out to every single person in that email that originally lodged complaints, based on the understanding that there'd be... I have to say, I think sometimes, people look at their phones, and they see the topic, and they're thinking, oh my gosh, I've already made my decision, what's happening? I too do this, partly because I need glasses, but also because, you know, it's, we're time-pressed. And, and I will say, sort of in terms of the entire pool of roughly, I'm, I'm trying to recall, but maybe 130, 140 people I emailed, there were, over the course of three or four weeks ahead of time, two or three people that needed me to go back and personally, through a series of emails, explain what the ordinance does and doesn't do, but...
And those two people went on next door.
And, 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 yeah, and I, you know, and there was also something on Tomwater Hill, I think, Facebook, and I think that may have actually been retracted when I spoke with one of them. So I, I'm not saying we caught every single person, but we did really, 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 with, from colleagues, with advice from City Administrator Parks, try to ensure people at least understood what's in and not in the ordinance. And some cases, I even went back and talked about what we were facing in the original decision with regard to the Supreme Court, and, and that then became more clear over time, and then moved forward into this situation, where we could have a discussion about the ordinances and the rules that apply, I'm sorry, maybe they're not ordinances, the rules that apply at the parks would now apply on a, as maybe was intended in the first place.
Thank you. Because it is very easy for rumors to let them go on social media, I'm surprised that they're not even here tonight, because my expectation was the, the community were going to come here to us, and we were changing an ordinance, and don't know what was at doing, we're allowing homelessness, and then I went to where the sources, like, my God, this is where this is coming from. I don't do social media, but I have to go check, and it was right there. So, I know we've communicated to them in the past, I mean, it's always nice to do it multiple times, because some people, you gotta keep telling them, it's been to you over and over again, because that's just how they understand things. So, if you have the time, do it again, tell them.
We, we took the time, and I agree that there, there is some of that, and I think I'd also like to just state that I, I see the city here carrying on many levels, there's two sides of this, one, clarifying the ordinance, see my colleagues around the city, you know, donating to the food bank, having a huge pile of socks first October, working at these showing up at community events, mission and vocation driven. So I, I gotta say, I love that, that about the city. And in terms of this particular ordinance, the, the main goal here was, for, at least in my area, was to clarify, and we spent a lot of time doing that, so.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Back to your regular scheduled meeting.
And any other questions or comments? All right. Was that, was that your presentation, Chuck, or am I...
I think it was.
Were you ready?
Yeah. If you, if you have any further questions, I'd be happy to, to try to address them, or find someone else in the room to do it. But ultimately, asking you to approve Ordinance 02025-008, amending the Tomwater Municipal Code Section 12.32 for Tomwater Parks.
All right. Councilmember Swarthout?
I'd like to make the motion to approve Ordinance Number 02025-008, amending Tomwater Municipal Code Section 12.32, public parks.
Can I second that motion?
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Swarthout, seconded by Councilmember Jefferson. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Althouser?
Thanks, yeah, I, like I said earlier, I think I agree with, like, what's in here, like, and even looking back to when we had the public hearings, I, I think, like, the common concern that we heard was, like, it makes things across facilities, and that's the lion's share of what happens here. I think the thing that I do have pause about, I think just from a philosophical perspective, is the exclusionary letter portion of this. It just feels weird to me to have the ability to say that a public facility could be excluded from a public space, and I know that there's discretion built into this, in terms of law enforcement, and your role, Chuck, in terms of being able to do those letters. It just sort of seems to me that that piece in particular, I, I do have some reservations about. Karen, some of the guidance that you mentioned, I think will be helpful and instructive, particularly if that can be introduced as, like, evidence before a hearing examiner in terms of who he actually is, but I do have reservations, just from a philosophical perspective, of being able to say that, you know, City Hall, that someone can be excluded from it, based on the letter from a law enforcement officer as such. And I, I fully recognize the case that maybe that's even more lenient than a civil penalty, right? Like, it could serve sort of as a warning of sorts, if you look at it from a systemic perspective of maybe someone gets the letter, and then there was a violation, and then, you know, then that also triggers the civil liability, either from the exclusionary letter or for underlying civil liability, like, maybe that could be viewed as sort of a ramp-up. But philosophically, I, I think I have reservations about that piece. If we vote on this tonight, I think I'll still vote for it, but I, as a, as a citizen, as this unfolds, and no longer a council member at that point in time, I think I'll be monitoring it to make sure that, you know, that, that guidance is, is thorough, and is issued to the point that we make sure that it's narrow and as specific as possible, and built in proper discretion for the hearing examiner to be able to take extenuating circumstances into account, jury levels of preponderance of the evidence.
Any other questions? I see Karen paying attention, so she'll probably give good guidance.
And I just want to say, I'm voting in favor of this, and I appreciate your comments, Councilmember Althouser, you're, I appreciate your conscience and your, your, your legal ability to bring out things that, for us to consider as well, and I appreciate that. For me, the ordinance cleans things up, just makes things clear, that it was not clear before, and it made, it was difficult for our, our law enforcement to, and so this does make, makes it clear, and as far as, like, events and city property, that it's all the same thing, and so it, it just, so I appreciate this, that, I think it was a cleanup bill, so thank you, or ordinance, so thank you for that.
Comments before I call for the vote?
I have a comment.
Okay. Councilmember, I don't see your camera, so I didn't recognize you being there.
I know, I don't know where it went.
There we go. There we, it was a second there, it was a second. Wait, there you go, there you go.
Yeah. Um, I agree with Michael. The thing that concerns me is what, is anything with this, um, ending up with the, you know, examiner and so forth, are things going to be held against that person? I mean, does this get, does this, or does this get, a name get entered in anything? Or is it just us, this Tom Water, protect our property and public places?
Uh, it is the latter. Uh, Karen has indicated, uh, was, uh, this is not anything that is registered or identified or publicized. Um, uh, Councilmember Althouser talked, uh, a little bit about, you know, maybe this is, maybe this is a step prior to the civil infraction and that is indeed the purpose for the exclusionary letter is that it is something short of an actual infraction. So it's a way in which we are able to, it gives us another tool and a lower level of, um, of, um, enforcement capability, uh, rather than jumping immediately to some sort of a civil infraction for something level of, um, enforcement.
So this person, um, is there a certain length of time on, on this communication to a person, um, or a family? I mean, I guess if you found a whole family on property, that they, they are excluded, I think the example was of coming to City Hall. Is there a time limit that they cannot do certain, go certain places?
So, uh, to clarify, this wouldn't have any criminal ramifications. This doesn't go on any kind of criminal record or anything like that. And yes, um, you, in the, in the code currently, um, if violator has not been excluded previously, the enforcement officer may exclude the, the violator, um, from the property for a period not to exceed seven days.
How many days?
Seven.
Seven.
And then if they have been the subject of a prior exclusion within one year of the current violation, um, the exclusion can be for a period not to exceed 90 days.
From any exclusion from any city property, not just where they were found?
To be the violation of, of one of these rules. And then yes, it would, the, the letter that would be issued would indicate what, what the violation was, um, what the period of exclusion is, um, and, and specify the details. And that's what I was saying, we could develop some templates, um, that we'd be using going forward for these potential exclusions, particularly if they were with respect to City Hall, which previously has not been covered by these rules. Um, and then in addition, what's new about this is the per, the hearing procedural pieces. But the exclusion letter is not new to, to this ordinance and the, and the rules.
And thank you. Thank you, Karen.
Councilmember Althouser?
I, I was just gonna clarify, I, I understand, because Councilmember Kathy, I think you, what you're sort of getting at is like, if someone gets issued an exclusionary letter, will it haunt them if they apply for housing or a job where they're working unsupervised with children or vulnerable adults where you're typically subject to background checks? I assume, not to put words in your mouth, but I think that's what you're trying to get at. And I agree for like a criminal background check, none of this would ever come up, but for a broader background check, civil records can be a portion of a background check, correct, Karen? Like if someone, someone does a background check to pull all court records and someone has a civil violation, that would occur. It's just not a criminal background check, this would not appear because there's no criminal liability being imputed.
It's, I, I won't say it's not, I mean, that it's impossible that this would come up, but this would never be filed in court. Um, you know, at most it would be filed in front of our hearing examiner.
All right. Any more discussion or questions? Okay, with that, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Any sustaining? All right, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Uh, last item on our considerations is resolution number R25-014, uh, City of Tom Water Strategic Plan and City Administrator Parks.
It disappeared. Yes, please, thank you.
Did somebody walk off with a clicker?
The, the clicker has disappeared.
Oh, it's got hidden.
There we go, thank you. Yes, so, uh, we are before you this evening, asking for your consideration of adopting the resolution that would adopt the updated City of Tom Water Strategic Plan. So our strategic plan, uh, is a big picture document that helps to, uh, direct the efforts and the resources of staff, of our budgets. Uh, it helps to provide transparent communication with our community about what the city council has determined to be, uh, important priorities for our work. Um, and it is intended to help prioritize, uh, all of the work that city staff, um, works towards on a regular basis, not just the things that we're obligated and mandated to do, but the other optional things, um, like an FD cares program or a crisis response, uh, program, uh, or a lot of our parks, uh, and recreational programming. So this is a document that is intended to identify those goals and prioritize them and, and provide a way in which, uh, the community can understand, uh, what the city council is thinking in terms of priorities, a way for staff to prepare budgets, and it's also a way for staff to, uh, report back to the city council on these different priorities, uh, that you have for our work. We have identified the six focus areas that you see here. Uh, these are consistent what were the previous, um, strategic priorities in our, uh, most recently adopted and applicable, uh, document that was called Strategic Priorities and Goals. We have different action items within each of these focus areas that are assigned to either a single department, but in most cases, multiple departments working collaboratively, uh, to ensure that the action items that bring the focus area goals, uh, to reality. Each of those action items will also have an annual work plan, which will have very specific tasks that will be able to be accomplished third year, and it will allow then the departments to structure and organize their work and then again, provide an update and a report on the progress that we're making towards, uh, meeting the expectations of the focus area goals and the goal statement, as well as the various action items. The resolution itself is a document that identifies all of the reasons we are undertaking this strategic plan. It very clearly identifies the commitment that the organization has in adopting this strategic plan, uh, to, uh, realizing our vision, mission, and living by our values. And it is again, emphasizes and identifies what the strategic, the body of the ordinance, excuse me, the resolution essentially adopts, uh, the strategic plan. It, uh, city administrator and therefore your staff, uh, to implement the various components of the strategic plan. It also asks for regular reporting and it does indicate that there is a plan that each, each, that this document will be a living document. It is intended to be fully and completely updated, uh, every six years. Every two years, there's a distinct and specific intentional review of the action items. And as I mentioned, every single year, there will be a development of annual work plans that also then provide, uh, reporting, uh, mechanism for staff back to the city council. So our request is that you approve resolution R2025-014, adopting the 2026 Water Strategic Plan. I'm happy to answer, any questions?
Any questions? This has been a multiple months of work, so, so do I hear a motion to approve?
I've been leading the motions since I keep doing it. So here we go. Um, I move to adopt resolution R2025-014, adopting the Tom Water Strategic Plan, 2026 through 2032.
Uh, oh. So we're in the motion. Do you want questions after Councilmember Kathy and Councilmember Althouser? Do you want questions now or after the motion and?
I was gonna, I raised my hand to speak to the motion, so after someone seconds.
Okay. Do I have a second?
We, yes, we do need a second first.
Yes, any second.
Second.
Okay, it's been, yes, by Councilmember Swarthout, seconded by Councilmember Althouser. I'm sorry. Agabi, I'm telling you. Um, so with that, I have an order, by the way, the hands came up, so I'll just go by that. So Councilmember Kathy first, then Councilmember Althouser. Councilmember Kathy?
Well, I thought this was a very long process and, um, I thought it was well done. And I just wanted to commend, um, you know, I mean, the work that went into this, uh, obvious, I think, by, by what we've come up with and whether we touched on everything everybody wanted or we got it down on paper or whatever, I think the, somehow the process of doing it was, um, was helpful. It was, it, uh, been here a long time and I learned new things about people I already knew and how they responded to, to, um, questions or responded to what direction we were headed or so forth. So I thought this was, um, um, an exercise in, in good governance here and if we can, if we can, you know, live by some of these things and accomplish what we need to in the next few years, um, I just want to thank all of the staff and the people who participated. That was another thing I liked, how much staff engine that we had in this process. So thank you to everybody who's been part of it and my councilmates. I think it's been a while since we've done something this big. So that was what I would like to say.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Althouser?
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Councilmember Kathy took some of the words right out of my mouth. I just wanted to recognize all the, all the good work that went into this. They've really sort of dedicated that kind of time and effort to be forward thinking in, in a little while. And I think that, um, just sort of demonstrating the initiative to, to do this and so that the public can kind of see the direction that we envision in a very clear way, especially alongside all the work for the COP plan that, um, will be adopted early next year, um, I think is, um, a very important step that we're taking. So I'll, I'll be happy to vote in favor of it, um, in a few moments. Thank you.
Uh, Council?
I want to compliment, um, how beautiful it is. Uh, the report is visually beautiful. Um, it's, it's really pretty to look at and when, when you, when you get other people's plans online when you're, that I just want to commend you, um, that it's, it's pretty. It's very, it's very easy to follow, um, and it's very attractive. Excellent job and it's just, it's very thorough and I commend, I wasn't able to go to all the sessions, but I want to commend my council seatmates for this and all the staff as well. This was, uh, this was one of the biggest things we've done and, and I commend all of you for the work that was done. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments before I call for the vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Yes, this has been a long, uh, process and has taken a multitude of hours and commitment. And so I think this will be very, a very good document moving forward, so. All right, so that is all we have under the consideration, council considerations. And now we'll go to committee reports and the very first one is Public Health and Safety.
Thank you, Mayor. So we did meet, uh, in November because of the holiday, but we are meeting on December 9th and discussion, I said, to agenda item, um, and one is to talk about the T-Date. And then, uh, I, we did talk a little bit about the, um, when we talked about the homelessness issue and having somebody come to talk to the, um, to the Public and Safety Committee. We have teed up, um, somebody that would give us at least some sort of information about, um, not necessarily better availability, but at least resources that are available within, uh, within, uh, Tom Water, that, that people in crisis can get themselves into. So that is going to be happening on December 9th. That's Mayor's vote.
Great, thank you. Uh, General Government Committee, Councilmember Althouser?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. The General Government Committee met on November 12th. Um, I have been out of town, so I did not actually attend this meeting, but it is my understanding that the discussion of the COP plan still took place and that, um, as a full council and a body will be reviewing that work in the coming.
Great, thank you. Uh, Public Works Committee, Councilmember Swarthout?
Uh, Public Works and Safety, or Public Works and Safety, where did that come from? Where did that come from? I'm late. Okay, so.
We're all having an issue tonight.
Public Works will be meeting on Thursday, November 20th. And on our agenda is the Service Provider Agreement with Fair and Peers for Vehicle Miles Travel Gap Analysis, Technical Services Agreement with the King County for Regional Collaboration for Better Resilience Outcomes in the Puget Sound Basin, Service Provider Agreement with Corello Engineers for the 2025 Sanitary Sewer Comprehensive Plan Update, Ordinance Number 02025-015 Amendment Domain for X Street, Resolution Number R2025-020 for the Craft District Development Agreement Amendment Number Four. We'll see you at eight o'clock on Thursday.
Great, thank you. Uh, Budget and Finance Committee, uh, has not met since our last committee and the next one is canceled due to it being on Thanksgiving. So, uh, we'll go to Mayor's City Administrator Report and we will start out with, uh, City Administrator Parks.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to reiterate, uh, that GIS Day is tomorrow from four to six. That's the public, uh, public, uh, available, uh, uh, activity that our GIS team is going to be, um, uh, providing to the community. It sounds like a lot of fun. They're actually going to be in several different locations during the day, actually doing fun activities with our staff as well. So, uh, really appreciate their innovation and they really have a lot of fun doing mapping. Um, so that's great. Uh, to also reiterate, um, this October final counts we're in, so this is a, um, Tom Water City Employee, essentially, uh, and it is the Black Hills High School Interact Rotary Club, uh, as well as Together and Family Support Center. Um, the challenge becomes basically from the Water Resources and Sustainability Department, how many socks, uh, can each department, um, bring in? They gave us a break, those of us in our small little departments, they gave us a break this year and, and added a bunch of us together so that we could actually pool our resources. We actually had 1,613 pairs of socks that were delivered to, uh, the, the places that I mentioned. Um, I would also point out that we do have a food drive going on. There is also a challenge involved with that as well amongst the bargaining, uh, collective bargaining, uh, unit members and employees. Um, and so we are, um, gathering food in the lobby as an, and if you'd like to, you could contribute because that would be then a contribution to the nonrepresented, um, employee group and we would then, um, be in a, in an advantageous, advantageous position. We are also going to be working on that food drive and promoting the food drive as part of our Christmas tree lighting, uh, which happens on Saturday, December 6th. And we will also be, um, accepting donations at our Santa stops, which occur in early December. Um, and then just a brief update for you, a reminder about your up council meetings. Um, there are several committee meetings that are happening in, in the rest of November and December. Public Works this Thursday. Public Works on December 4th, which is the Thursday after our meeting on December 2nd. Public Health and Safety on the 9th. Currently, there are no agenda items on the December 10th General Government Committee meeting, nor are there currently any items on the December 18th Public Works Committee meeting. So stay tuned. We try not to cancel those meetings too far in advance, just in case something comes up. But for right now, it appears that those will not occur. In terms of our regular council meetings and work sessions, there is a work session next Tuesday, the 25th. The regular meeting on Tuesday, December 2nd. And then on Tuesday, December 9th, that is your joint work session with the Planning Commission. So at actually 6 o'clock, we will have the big table again set up here in council chambers. So hopefully, some of you will be able to attend in person along with the Planning Commission members. Currently, there isn't anything on the, after the council's work session agenda after that joint session, but you will likely have a conversation with the Planning Commission. There's, I think, three separate items, including a discussion of the 2026 Long Range Planning Work Plan, which is always a great... And then lastly, the Tuesday, December 16th meeting, regular council meeting, likely to be the last meeting of the year. Invite you to come at 6 o'clock on that night. We are planning a reception to express our thanks to both Councilmember Althausser and Ellen prior to the regular meeting. And then just as a reminder, I mentioned this a couple of meetings ago, we need every council member here on that night in order to assist with consideration of some of the ordinances that we are asking for your consideration on, related to the comprehensive plan and the development regulation ordinances. So please let us know if you absolutely cannot be here on the 16th. Reminder. And then lastly, we are closed next week on both Thursday and Friday for the holiday, the Thanksgiving holiday. Have, Mayor. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So for mine, I will have the EDC meeting tomorrow. So we will have that meeting. Otherwise, I have not attended any other meetings. And now I will turn it over to council reports. So let me start out in Zoom land with Councilmember Jefferson.
I attended one T hopes meeting last, and our new coordinator was hired last Thursday. And we discussed environmental strategies and also a possibility of a hybrid and in-person meeting to meet Hallie. And that's my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Althausser?
Thanks, Mayor. I have been out of town, so I did not attend the most recent Regional Housing Council meeting. But I believe Councilmember at the end of October. So hopefully, Councilmember Kathy, I don't mean to put you on the spot, though actually, come to think of it, you probably are at the last council meeting. So there's probably no report to be had for the Regional Housing Council. But we'll see.
What high mountain were you on?
What's that?
I say, you were not here for that meeting and I just want to, were you going to call on me next, Mayor?
Yes, I was going to call on you next.
Okay, excuse me, I didn't mean to jump in there. I figured I was the last one in Zoom land. I wanted to comment to Councilmember Althausser. Yes, I did attend that meeting. And I want to know, while I was in that meeting, what high mountain you were on?
Okay, I was on Tharong Law in Nepal, which is 17,700 feet in the air.
Whoa. Well, I was just down in, you know, in Tumwater, trying to do what you do so well. And I was, I want to send out a big shout of gratitude, which I've done many times, for Brad. He is, he's an amazing person. And I know he's working really hard now. But he came to that meeting. I confirmed it wasn't because he didn't trust me, but he knew that there was plenty of things going on and he might need to, you know, talk about them. And so he did. Yes, I did attend that meeting. And can't find where I wrote down my notes. It must have been someplace in really scary territory or something. But I will mention it and talk to you about it, Michael, what we talked about. And then if you want to bring it up at council next week, it'd be great. Or just talk to Brad, he knows what went on. But we missed you. And then I had two other meetings, all of this on the same day, mind you. That's why I did notes. I had General Government and then I had ORCA. And I don't want to take up a lot of time. So one of the, just, I want to mention one thing from the Clean Air Agency. And that is that, you know, this is the time of year for outdoor burning issues in all of the counties. We represent five counties and this is an issue everywhere. Often, the same people don't think it matters that they, you know, pile up all their leaves somewhere close to their neighbor's fence or something and burn them to see the difference in the air quality when there's a lot of outdoor burning. So that was a big issue and ways for us to warn people. Please do not, do not burn outside. Recycle your leaves, use them in your garden, but don't burn them on your property. The other part of ORCA was about wood stoves. This is another thing. And we've been fortunate every year to get grants, a grant, for wood stoves in trying to convert wood stoves to, you know, slowly moving away from using wood to pellets or electric or something. And have been very, very successful. And people, and I just want you to know, people in this area in Thurston County have been receptive to making a change from wood. And overall, we've been doing well in our air quality. So that's good news. And especially now when a lot of money for organizations like, you know, like in a clean air comes from the federal government, which is, it doesn't much care right now about people's clean air. So our people are doing a great job. So that's my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Von Holt?
Thank you, Mayor. I have inner-city transit tomorrow.
Okay, great. Councilmember Agabi?
Thank you, Mayor. On the 10th of November, I attended a JASCOM meeting. And I had the meeting, which was mostly to talk about our budget for 2026. We did talk a whole lot about that. And then on December 8th or maybe 10th is when we adopt that budget. And then it wasn't a very long meeting, but as we were about to leave, some livestock issue into the equation. And I have to tell them, Tumwater, don't do livestock. So that's none of our problem, that's the county. Would we do livestock? We don't. Exactly, so, anyhow, so. So, and that was, that was that discussion. And then on November 12th, I attended the Consultation Board Meeting, which was a very, very good meeting because we talked about lightweight services from, we imagine from downtown Olympia to... But the problem with that is, it is just a concept. So it needs money, and money is not, but if it become a team, it will, it would do good in this region. And then we also talked about the I-5 Martins Road to Mount Road. There's going to be some kind of alignment in that area. And then we talked about the Southwest Thurston County Trail Study that is ongoing. And then we talked about the, at that point in time, the recruitment was ongoing for the TRP C Director. And that person has been hired, so we did talk about that. And I think I'll let councilmembers throughout provide the details. So that's my, that's me, I'm done.
Great, thank you. So I will go to Councilmember Swarthout.
Well, thank you. And so I'll make it quick. We did, I was served on the committee, the interview committee for the TR Executive Director. And we did meet on November 7th and spent the whole day in interviews. And it was quite a process and three very well-qualified candidates. It was a very difficult decision. But we did select Melissa Gertler, who is from Oregon. And she has 25 years in housing transportation and land use and community development with regional and local governments. And so she'll be joining us, I hope to meet her at our December 5th meeting. And then she's, she'll be moving up here. So big shoes to fill with Mark Daly, but we're looking forward to meeting her. So, yeah, it was a good day.
Great, thank you. All right, with no other business, and we are now past 9 o'clock. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. I was afraid it was going to be wrong.